Good morning. It is 10 o'clock on September 3rd, 2019, and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors and would invite you, if you would like to, to join us as we say the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I would entertain a motion for adopting the agenda. I so move. Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda's approved. Next, we have public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So if anybody has any comments they would like to make, please come to the microphone. Seeing nobody, move to the microphone. I'll close public comment. Next, we have consideration of proclamation of September as National Recovery Month by Community and Family Resources. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name is Todd Anderson. I am an Anderson County CFR. I am a prevention specialist, also project director for mental health awareness training, providing mental health first aid training. I'm here just out of recognition for September being National Recovery Month. Excuse me. Community and Family Resources, we're a behavioral, nonprofit behavioral health. Also, we address prevention, treatment, diagnosis of mental illness as well as addiction, including gambling and tobacco and recognition of that. We are just looking for story county support for National Recovery Month in 2019. We do have proclamation. Beforehand, I would like to also promote, I'm just going to get a few plugs in here, some of the annual recovery wellness family fun festival that we have in Fort Dodge. We are at our new location at 211 Avenue M. And also, that is on, excuse me, September 14th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. That is our Fort Dodge location. We also have a recovery wellness 5K run and walk, actually, this Saturday, September 7th, at Ada Hayden Park in Ames, Iowa, as well. And I will be in the flyers for both of those. However you'd like to proceed with the proclamation and reading it or just signing it, I'll leave it up to you.
We usually read proclamations. So I'll go ahead and read it.
That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
And thank you very much for all of the information and for the things you believe in this.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So, Recovery Month proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective and recovery is vital to the well-being of the individual and the community, and whereas proactively acknowledging and treating mental and/or substance abuse disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance abuse disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need of appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas, given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must strive to offer all persons the same opportunities for treatment and recovery and wellness, and whereas approximately 100,000 Iowans currently receive treatment for mental illness or substance abuse addiction, whereas in 2017, an estimated 20.7 million people aged 12 and older needed substance abuse treatment, but just 4 million received treatment, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of Drug Control Policy, and the Story County Board of Supervisors invite all residents of Story County to participate in National Recovery Month. And Story County, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of Story County, does hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Recovery Month. In Story County, pardon me, and call upon the people of Story County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month. In witness thereof, we set our hands as their day of September in the year 2019. I would call for a motion to approve.
I approve the adoption of the Recovery Month proclamation.
I second. Okay. Any further discussion?
I usually take an opportunity to express gratitude for the many people who helped me 23 and now a half years ago. That's how long I've been sober. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. If you would leave me an email address, we'll send you a copy of the signed proclamation.
Not a problem at all. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Todd.
Have a good day.
Next, we will go on to continuation of discussion and consideration of additional funding to HERDA for restoration, revision, maintenance of services in Story County impacted by FY20 budget cuts. We have Julia Castillo. Julia, you on the line?
She just stepped away for a second. She thought she'd be back before it was our turn. Just wondering.
Okay. We can hold on just a minute. I'll go through a couple other things on the agenda, and you tell me when she's back. Okay?
Okay.
We have no agency reports. We do not have minutes to consider today. We'll have them next month. Consideration of personnel actions. We have no personnel actions for today. Consideration of claims.
I would move that we approve them as presented.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda. I have to go ahead.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda is approved. So we're down to public hearing items. So we might just take a wait on that. Let's see. Is Julia back yet? Let's do public hearing.
I'm sorry, she's not. We can start anyway.
We'll go on to the next item. It's okay. So Amelia Shoneman.
Okay. So this is the third consideration of ordinance 285 for storm water and erosion control. You've had two public hearings where you approved the ordinance prior to this one. So we thank you for your support and would recommend final approval on third consideration of ordinance 285 today.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members? Any discussion? Okay, then I will open the public hearing. So if any members of the public want to comment, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I would move the third reading of ordinance number 285, amending chapter 85.08 definitions and chapter 88.05 environmental and natural resource standards for storm water management and erosion and sediment control of the Story County land development regulations, Story County Code of Ordinances.
I second the motion.
That motion was almost as long as the resolution.
I know. It was hard to read with the dilated eyes, but we have done it.
You did well. Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Then, are there any discussion? Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you to planning and development for all of your long, hard work on this. And particular thanks from our watershed assessment working group, because this has been one goal that we've had there. So, done a very good job.
Thanks for your support.
You bet. Okay. Let's go back to the HERDA. Are we ready now?
This is Julia. I'm here now.
Hi, Julia.
Sorry.
That's okay. We are then back up to item number six, continuation of discussion and consideration of additional funding to HERDA. Julia Castillo, would you like to make a presentation, an update maybe from what we talked about the last time?
So the update would be is we had a conversation with the asset admin team. We both attended a meeting that they had and answered all of their questions. I believe that they gave back to the county board supervisors. Is that right?
Yes, we received an email from Carla Webb.
Okay. And so, in the discussions that we've had with them, not a lot has changed from the presentation that we gave the last time in saying that we believe that the marketing and outreach position that would be funded as a part-time position would give us the most bang for our buck and be able to help us in the Story County area to accomplish some of the other things that were on this list without having the high cost of some of the other things that were presented there.
And as a reminder, we did fund on July 30th the $3,690 for this year.
Yes.
That backfilled the aging resources of central Iowa reduction.
The update I have on that is we are going out to all of our other counties and asking them to do the thing that Story County has done to fill in that gap. So, and we made a presentation to Marion County last week regarding that, and so we have to go back and do another second presentation with them, but I just wanted you to know that we are trying to get all of our other counties to buy into that aging resource part to fill that gap as well, so that Story County's not the only one.
Okay. So I have another question, if I might, and then I'll turn it over to the others. Are you asking other counties for anything else besides the aging resources backfilling?
We have asked, we started asking the other counties for any of the bus replacement money that you, that Story County gave earlier in the year for the buses that we're replacing in Story County. We're going out to the other counties and asking them for that. And...
Julia, you might make note that for two of the counties, it was not a financial ask, but that the board recently voted to do away with some Sunday services. So in that particular case, those two counties were on board with doing away with some Sunday transportation that was offered out there. So rather than ask for more money, those two counties backed the board waiving some trips.
What counties were those?
Jasper.
That would have been Marion County and Jasper County.
Thank you.
And we are also starting to look at requesting some funding from some of the cities. Right now, we receive funding from the city of Ames and the city of Newton, which are the only two cities that we receive funding for. And so, we both and I have been trying to make a plan, put a plan together on how we can get the cities to do some buy-in to public transportation that's offered in those communities as well.
Lisa, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Just, I'm sorry, I didn't print John Carla's email, and I don't have it right here. But the marketing and outreach specialists, was that a position that you had and was reduced due to the budget cuts recently for the fiscal year, this current fiscal year that you're in?
We had a mobility coordinator who gave a lot of our marketing and outreach. It's just a different name for them. And yes, that was, it was a funded position, and that funding went away, and so we weren't able to, we weren't able to absorb those expenses into our budget because of the revenue shortfalls that we experienced the last fiscal year.
So how was that one funded? Because I was looking at your funding through asset, so it just says transportation, you know, through the county, the region, the city and stuff. So was that funded through asset or was it other funding?
It was funded through a grant on the Iowa DOT. It was actually federal dollars that came through the Iowa DOT.
That's right. Okay.
When did that money go away?
The last of the funding we received in July of 2018, and so because we didn't have the funding to continue that position, her last day was in August of 2018.
Okay.
For the... August of 2018.
Yes. August of 2018, she said was her last, the last time.
So that was our fiscal year 19 year, which, so it went away our fiscal 19 year. So we didn't have that position at all last fiscal year.
Okay. So did you request through asset for a newer expanded service at all for this fiscal year?
We didn't because the budget, when Julia does those budgets, it's two years out. So we weren't aware necessarily at the time that she did those asset budgets. And I did, our accountant and I attended, I'm just sorry, this is Brooke. We attended the asset training, and that's one of the things that we kind of required about, and we'll look at doing in future years, is maybe breaking out more of those types of programs within the asset application.
Sure. I guess I was just wondering, since you said you lost her, the funding in August of 2018, but I knew, I know new and expanded services requests were due by May 24th of 2019. So you would have had nine months to at least write that for this next fiscal year that you'd be writing for for this fiscal year. So that's why I was just trying to wrap my head around it a little bit.
Yeah, and I apologize. We, and I think some of that's a terminology issue for us. We weren't aware that a position like that could be considered a service. We were looking at services more like the service to Iowa City or service to Des Moines or service levels with, you know, where the bus is moving. We didn't realize that that was something we could break out separately.
And I'd like to throw in here just a minute. I'm looking out at Carla Webb also. Is that because we fund HERDA very differently through the asset process, we're charging down as per rider, right? Where we're funding rides. And so, always, the discussions at the HERDA board table are related to services as Brooke just described them, like addition of a new route or addition of another trip per week. And that's one thing that the HERDA board has got to look at in all the counties, even though the other counties, except Dallas, just give a lot some. We're the only one who does for a ride, per se. But we've got to start factoring in how these type of what you would call administrative type, you know, non-service direct, like a body getting on a bus and going somewhere. How do we charge for those and allocate those costs appropriately through all the counties? Asset, I feel, just adds another layer to it about that. But so, we've always looked at those as a separate kind of set off aside, but I think that the entire HERDA board needs to take a look, and some of these are necessary costs that just haven't been probably passed on appropriately, certainly not maybe through the asset process.
Yeah, I think I was just trying to figure out if this was just for Story County before, and it ended in August, again, why the application was not submitted for me. So, I mean, I get it. Yes. So that answers my one question there. That is the main thing you're looking at is for this, finishing up this fiscal year is funding for that marketing and outreach, reinstating that position, or at least in a part-time capacity. Is that correct?
Correct.
And was it just for Story County before?
We use the mobility coordinator across our region, but what we're looking at doing with this marketing position, having it only be part-time, having it be specifically for Story County, and then the goal would be to have this position do some training and education, not only with individual community members, for example, with donations for the aging resources rides, but also we've had turnover with businesses, and as that has happened, you know, there was a tremendous effort of education and working through the task force that Story County helped us do back in 2013. And, you know, there's the turnover of staff, and we've lost some of that educational component. We'd like to reinstate that.
So how do you ensure reporting rights that dollars allocated, that this would only be Story County only, than not going towards other counties? I'm assuming that's going to be part of your, at your board meetings, and can we have them come back and report to us? Can we have them do monthly or quarterly reports or what? Is usually that on the pass?
Usually, it's been an annual, but they can come more often because, yeah, so...
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
And because this would be, I mean, we called it a marketing and outreach position so that it could be understood what they would actually be doing, but as a mobility coordinator position, we have a, we developed some standards that they have to meet, and they have goals that they have, that that position has to focus on. And so there's like monthly reports that we used to have them fill out, that position fill out, and we would continue to have them do that, so it would specifically show where they're going and who they're talking to and what the outreach is that they're doing. So you would be able to see that that was actually just in the Story County area.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have no questions for HERDA. I just have a couple of questions for the asset process moving forward.
So Carla, this year, the fiscal year 19 that just ended, HERDA went through its asset money by April. Okay? Had used up all the rides. All right? So if HERDA had had more money but was still having to draw down per ride, would that have been appropriate for us to have funded through the asset process? Or would it be more appropriate for us to fund a service position and leave the rides somewhere near the same? I'm asking you guys for ongoing.
You're talking about this outreach marketing position.
Correct.
I think typically what agencies do, they're building that into their service costs, so it's built into the overall budget rather than funded as a particular service itself, I think. So...
So given that we're looking at this as a one-time amount here, us kind of jump-starting this, but that the expectation would be that the HERDA board would take over this from other revenues in fiscal year 21, whether it be through revenue saving about realignment of services all over. There were also the same special meeting we had where we reduced Sunday service to those couple of counties. We cut down on bus preparation, bus driver preparation time. That worked out to be quite a significant savings when you looked over the year, like, what, $60,000 or something like that. So, given that, that we would not pick it up, would, do you think it would still be appropriate, let's say they didn't add it in as an admin cost, which then we would pay, but instead would just increase the number of rides to cover for that last quarter? Is that something that you feel would be, the admin team would recommend to the admin volunteer, to the asset volunteers? Say the rate stayed the same. We didn't add in this person going forward because we're kind of talking about this being a one-time, and then the HERDA board needing to deal with it in the future. All right? But it was clear that we didn't give enough money to, through asset, anyway. So is that something that you would, could anticipate being a possibility?
So HERDA could ask for more funding from the county or from the city or United Way with their FY21 budget, projecting what is that shortfall that they're coming up against, and make that request within their FY21 budget. Now, it will depend on how much is there for dollars to be allocated, because as we've seen in past years, when agencies have had a significant increase in their ask, we haven't necessarily been able to do that. So, we can't project for sure if we'd be able to do it or not, but that's how I would have been.
But if we don't ask, you don't know what the need is.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
You bet.
Any other questions? Carla, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm going to extend. I was just going to bring up what I said.
So yes, HERDA could ask for more money for additional rides, but obviously, it's part of the asset process, and you can't guarantee what's going to happen.
Correct.
Okay. Makes sense. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to have some discussion first or motion?
You know, I could see some benefit to having that marketing and outreach. I certainly want to ensure, just because they are multi-county, that it is Story County-focused. And I get that, I wonder if they can consider multi-county and how you separate that out in reporting on there. I guess my separate comment, my assertion is hoping that HERDA is looking to increase their ask for this next fiscal year. Again, if you don't know what the need is, unless you ask for it, which is also a little bit better than the possible. So that would be one of the, we are looking at, I want to make sure that we are certainly getting some of that information. The question is, do we want to fund it at this time? And if so, do we look at a part-time or funding at the, say, what? Part-time college student at $10,000 or the marketing house, we're hoping at $10,000? Or do we not do it? I mean, did you ever use my sheet for...
Yeah.
I love to use that.
So is it two positions that you're looking at, one for $20,000 and one for $10,000, 920? Julia?
Yes. So one of them would be probably a college student that would be doing it on a very part-time basis. The other one would be somebody that has some experience in going out and giving presentations and working with the community. So that's the difference in the two part-time salary.
So it's a one or the other possibility. Having now sat on the board for two and a half years, having worked and with the mobility coordinator, I actually did work with her because we had, it came up in 20, I want to say, 2018, and we went to several different communities to try and give people an opportunity to learn more about HERDA. Always, of course, doing outreach is in advance, is, you learn from that. So I don't think it was as well-attended as it could have been. But what I saw there was the mobility coordinator, or outreach person, if you will, having the time to understand where people were hesitant to maybe switch over to the appropriate waiver program off of the general ride, or for, to match, understand what the needs were for possibly several riders at one time every other week, or that type of thing. So I believe that having a part-time person, if they can find a part-time person, because we know with the employment situation in central Iowa right now, some people don't want to work part-time. But I personally feel that going with the marketing and outreach person part-time for $20,000 is going to yield the best results, which allows then in the future for HERDA and the HERDA board to then take a look at, do they want to have this person just maintain what they... what they've accomplished in Story County and look at out with the Hurda Board funding it in the future to do the same with other counties. So I think in our last, the last time when they came up and presented a couple of weeks ago, I felt they did a good job of explaining about what has been lost and what could be achieved just in getting more revenues in, getting people assigned to the right revenue streams. I have, I have a question. I have a concern, something I'm just not sure about here. And I'm looking at Carla's email and specifically what she had written after talking with you about the mobility coordinator. Said that you would have the mobility coordinator working with people to get on the right funding stream, educating people about donation's best time to ride, have 20 to 50 new riders each month, have identified 73 Ames residents may qualify for Dial-A-Ride, are finding people are riding using regular fare instead of going through MCL. Now, I'm not an expert on business and I've been on your board before, but it sounds like the people you're trying to educate are already riding on your buses. I'm wondering if there isn't a more efficient way to get the information out to them and maybe you already have it, but let me just say, a pamphlet that's very clear, concise, said, "Did you consider this? Call this number if you need help," might be a better use of time than going out to try to find these people who already are on your buses. I'm just wondering if it isn't a lack of clear, concise information given to the people who are already riding about what might be a better way for them to ride and access services.
So yes, several people are riding our bus and that was part of the conversation with the asset admin team. So as an example, there was a gentleman who was writing three times a week to dialysis, oh, excuse me, and he was writing under the reaching resources donation basis. And then we found out that he had done this for years, never made a donation, and he actually qualified for the elderly waiver for Medicaid. So we know that people a lot of times will take the course with least resistance and that's, you know, whether he wasn't educated about the elderly waiver itself, we don't know. We don't know exactly how that happened. But we have, like the seven E folks there in Ames who should be on the Dial-A-Ride program, some of those are living in assisted living or they may be living in a nursing home. And so we need to network more with and educate more of the staff that work with them. And that kind of goes back to what I was talking about a little earlier with, you know, we did a considerable amount of work through the task force that Story County and the City of Ames and United Way helped to fund a few years ago. But there's been full staff turnover and we've lost some of the education component. We're also working to do more education even within our own office to help identify some things more. We, I won't pretend to be a specialist on the elderly waiver, but we do have someone coming in on the 17th to train our call center, if you will, staff to answer the phones so that they can better identify and help connect people with resources. But we still have facilities as well as people in the community that, you know, we need to work with to get them on the appropriate funding sources and educate them why that is.
So I think what I just heard was just handing out a pamphlet on the bus to your existing riders isn't enough because sometimes you need to get to the service providers or the case managers or those riders?
Correct.
Is that a fair enough statement, just short, succinct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think too, just adding to what she's probably saying is the quote-unquote system is so confusing to know which waiver you should be on or not on or what's allowed or not allowed. You almost need your own PhD to figure it all out.
Don't doubt it. Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion to the $20,000 for the marketing and outreach position to be a one-time funding, but I would like them to come back with reports. I prefer it to be quarterly at this particular time.
I second that. Okay. Further discussion? On favor of the motion? Heddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. So we would like you to come back quarterly and give us a report on how the, on what you're doing with the mobility coordinator position, how you're dealing with these issues. And I particularly think we'd want to see how you're identifying savings and how that would, just how that would then fit into whether you would be considering continuing that into the next year. And just to clarify, identifying savings throughout Hurda as opposed to, this is more set up to not do savings as to redirect, to bring in more revenue income. So I just, I may ask you for the, you say, like to see how you're identifying savings. This particular, the point of this particular position is to bring in more revenue and to redirect because waivers pay much more than like donations. Good point. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
And yes, we would be, we would be able to do that on a quarterly basis. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else before I hang up? Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Brooke. Thanks, Carla.
Thank you.
Okay. We will head on now. We are down to item 13, additional items. And we have LeAnn Harder and also have. David Whitaker. David Whitaker. Okay. Do you guys want to sit until LeAnn's done? Yeah, let's have LeAnn do a presentation. Rather than then hold up the wall.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a brief presentation and I just want to share some background information about the facade grant program. This is a request that's outside the scope of the normal request that you see. So I just want to go over the history and then where we are thus far. The program guidelines, it does, the facade grant program is intended to provide financial assistance to city governments. The city government is actually the applicant to help encourage reinvestment in private businesses. So it's a private-public partnership. We envision that it would help business districts in the smaller communities stimulating private investment to improve the facades of the buildings. Eligibility, again, the city serves as the applicant, working with eligible properties. Those are communities with 2,000 persons or less according to the 2010 census. It is a one-time reimbursement grant of either up to 20% of the total project costs or not more than $10,000. That $10,000 is kind of a magical number placeholder for the board's consideration. That is what annually is budgeted or placed in the budget of the Board of Supervisors for this program. The expectation then as part of this too is that the city provides matching funds equal to or greater than that approved by the county. I won't labor this, but definitely we want to see the improvements that are from the right-of-way signage, but not including billboards, lighting, landscaping, and then cosmetic or structural improvements are all acceptable uses of the funding. Now I'm going to get to this particular request and I'll turn it over to the applicant as well. On the address is 101 South US Highway 69 in Huxley. The owners are Whitaker Properties LLC. This is a general, so this is the existing building. General location, you can see, if you look on the image, it's surrounded in orange. The Casey's on Highway 69 in Huxley is kitty corner to the northeast of the site. The trail, you can see that roughly. Now, yeah, that's the trail coming in, isn't it? On the south perimeter of the property. So just some history, the program was established in calendar year 2014. When we first envisioned the program and brought to the board for approval, it was a competitive grant program. We had a deadline, I think it was March 30th or something in that particular year, we received two applications. And so then in fiscal year 2015, the city of Zering was the recipient of that grant. You see progressively, we've had more each year. In 2017, calendar year 2017, we removed that competitive nature of the grant and it's basically first come, first served, again, targeting those communities under 2,000. And fiscal year 2018, the Board of Supervisors, that Board of Supervisors at that time considered a request from the city of Story City, which does exceed the population threshold for some improvements. That was approved in the amount of $1,700. Subsequently to that, Story City decided not to go forward with the project. So that was removed. But in total, removing that amount, since the program was first established, the board has awarded a little over $41,000 in our communities. So the action that is requested by the board today is kind of twofold. One is to waive the population threshold of 2,000 persons to allow this request to go forward and be considered by the board. Huxley does exceed that population cap. And then in the materials that were submitted to the board, there was a cover letter that noted the city of Huxley had not yet taken action on the application, pending action by the Board of Supervisors. If you were to decide today to waive that population threshold and in essence approve this application, we would also need the city to formally take action. That is a requirement. It's kind of a chicken and egg, but the program guidelines are very clear that we need the city action to determine the matching amount. So with that, I'll answer any questions and then turn it over to applicant.
What was the request for, for Story City? That year, do you remember? The printing.
PDG printing.
Yeah. So PDG, right?
Yeah, PDG.
So it was for a facade, you know, for them, just, they're a two-story building. And if I might speak to that as one of the supervisors who voted for that. How that came about was that we were in the spring of the fiscal year, so we were nearing the end and had, not all of the money had been used. And so the city and the applicant came forward, Mark Jackson represented the city and the applicant came forward. They talked about wanting to do this facade. These bills was right on Main Street. It was a building that, up next to another building, that it had some, as I seem to recall, some facade improvements. Yeah, it was on Broad. Yeah. So anyway, so that after our discussion, given the fact that it was close to the end of the fiscal year and given the fact that we were not aware of any other communities under 2,000 who would be coming forward with an ask and that this was going to complete a, if you will, Main Street kind of facade rather than a standalone, those, I think, were all factors that we went into and we did vote for it, as we said, then they decided not to go through the project. So if I could now jump here to give a little context about how this request is in front of us. David Whitaker contacted me, would have been in, I believe, March, and asked me about it. And once again, that would have been into the last quarter of a fiscal year, of our fiscal year. And I indicated at that time, we've not, we did not, I believe, have all the money spoken for. We did not discuss the specifics of the project. He, I just said that the board, a previous board had voted for one going forward and said, "Well, you could think about asking." And I, LeAnn, did he speak with you at that time too?
Yeah, I think you called me, didn't you? Yeah.
So, but I never heard back from Mr. Whitaker and now we're in a new fiscal year. So the issues, as I see them, having voted on applications before, are, the first issue is, do we want to just tell Huxley and/or maybe Story City or include Nevada too and say, "We're going to open this program up to them." The whole, I remember when this program was created, as LeAnn said, at first it was competitive, but then there just weren't that many applications coming forward. And the thought, I believe, of a previous, previous, previous board was that these are very small communities. It's very rare for a business to want to come in and do work on Main Street to improve Main Street of a town of 500 or 1,000 people. And so if we can help with that, then that seems to be a good indicator that it will drive more economic activity. And so that's what has been the, I think, the decision-making basis for the applications until 2018. Obviously with the 2018 was, as I said, they came in and they made a pretty good argument for why this was going to improve the downtown area. And there was, we were aware of no one else who was coming in to use it. This particular application now comes at the beginning of a fiscal year. And so we've got that factor plus the factor about, do we open up just on this one basis and create an exception? Or do we add Huxley, Story City to it permanently? And then what do we do, you know, Nevada's another dump? So I see we've got several different steps here.
And kind of related to that, I did want to back up to this slide. I kind of breezed over it. So far this year for fiscal year 20, again, the board budgets $10,000 annually. You did award a grant to the city of Zering for a little over half of that, $5,530.
You can see from fiscal year 17 that the $10,000 has been, as LeAnn called it, placeholder. Okay. And so the statement of previous, previous board has, you know, we said, "Hey, if, you know, somebody comes in and there's a little over, we'll find it." I think it's the same tack we've taken with the home-based program, you know, as far as it comes into getting veterans to move to the county, but the $10,000 is what we do budget and where we're in here. So the, the conversation between you and in March and now is different because of the rollover of fiscal year. Mr. Whitaker, did you want to address the board?
Sure.
Chris? Chris, do we need that little microphone over here?
Talk loud too, unless it's recorded. Well, good morning. David Whitaker, owner of Whitaker Properties, with my wife Ann here today. Thanks for seeing us. Thanks, Laura Solson, for submitting this onto the agenda. Originally, I talked with Rick Sanders, previous board member, that I was going to be buying a building in Huxley. He said, "Hey, we have a grand facade program for that." Told him we were going to spend about $50,000 to spice it up a little bit, make it look better for the community. He says that fits right into our, what we invented this grant for. He also said that I should talk with Dustin at the community outreach gentleman at the city of Ames there. So I did that, reached out with him. I did reach out to Laura as well to see if we could ever make an I did reach out to Laura as well to see if we could ever make an exception to kind of get a feel for what board members might think at the time. We bought the building back in March, April. The current owner, Salon 101, didn't want anybody saying that we bought the building yet, so we kind of had to hold there for just a bit. But the goal was to spend about 20, hopefully you all got to see the proposal I sent there. We're going to spend probably around 23,000 as the estimation based on the bids to improve the outside of the building, give it a little classier look. We also want to put a garage door on the outside of the building to improve community involvement. Old guys like to have coffee and we would like to invite them to have coffee at our business every morning. And so a little bit of community involvement there, as well as we intend to hire a new person that's going to be there. So a little bit of job creation in the city of Huxley, not a whole lot, but we may bring on more. So a little bit of job creation would be the positive to it, community involvement by getting some of the folks in there to have coffee every day. That's part of this facade on the outside. And then as well as, it's going to increase the tax basis a little. I talked to Dave at the assessor's office there and asked, what would positives be for this? Because Dustin recommended that I get positives before approaching you guys with a request to go outside of your normal requirements of 2,000 people. Side note, the city of Huxley is 3,000 people per the census. I don't know what Nevada is and so is Story City. It was about 3,300, somewhere in there for population. So we're about 1,000 over that. That being said, talked with David again in the assessor's office, asked him what the ramifications for the county would be, of course, to collect taxes on this. He said, if we take a basis of 208,000 where it's currently assessed, we purchased the building for 275, so we're, taxes are most likely going to go up anyway. We have hopes to put about 50,000 in it. If we get a $300,000 valuation, if they value it at that, he said, you could see your taxes going up estimated around $2,500 a year. So my ask, if you were to approve the exception and to approve it, it's 20% for the county and 20% for the city of Huxley. So that would be about $4,700 each, 4,700 to you, the county, the board, and 4,700 to the city of Huxley. I did, so simple math, about a two-year return on investment and then you're going to get more money out of me on taxes. That being said, I talked with John Holdeman and I've met with the Economic Development Board for the city of Huxley first to ask them if they would approve it before I came to you guys. They want to see what you guys said first. So they are on board, John Holdeman. They don't have a specific program for this because this has not been in their wheelhouse. They did just create a program. This does not fit into their program. They stand to gain taxes as well. Just the school alone takes 50% of the taxes.
So, and I'm going to ask this question here because is this property not tipped already? So there's no money coming to the county?
Tipped? I don't know what you mean by that.
Tax incremental financing. Huxley's, and Huxley in the past at least, has had quite a bit of its property put under what's called a tax incremental financing district. So you're paying taxes, but it's actually going into Huxley to pay off loans they've done for economic development. That's a real, if it's tipped.
I don't really answer that.
So just want to point out to you that you may be paying, but that doesn't, to say it's coming to us or will come to us in the future is not necessarily.
The way the tax, back to the tax bill reads, that the county does get 13.24% on city levies, Story County Medical Center 2.44, county assessor gets 1.22. So our tax bill anyway, I couldn't tell you if it's tipped or not, but it does say that you get a pro.
But if it is, that's a very good point because the increment would not be coming to the county.
Right. So just, but it's a minor. The other thing I'd like to bring up, when you, just to get this out in the open too, one of the slides up there, it talks about that these must be visible from the right of way. It's not your, if I looked at the pictures correctly, is not your garage door in the back? It faces a fence in the back?
No. It's the front on 69.
Behind me 69.
So the garage door, that that's going to be that open glass is actually facing 69?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's why I asked.
So you have two main feral throughs there. The DOT numbers are 10,000 cars a day that drive by.
Okay.
So probably one of the most traveled roads in Huxley.
Thank you for that one. Those were my two questions.
So total dollar amount we have available here, is that times 10,000, is that correct?
That's what we budget for.
55, 30, so.
Has already been asked for. So we have, yeah, about nine months left for one of the communities under 2,000.
We don't have deadlines.
If we leave it the way it is.
So these can come through any time of year.
I get that, but I was just trying to think it out. Fund in the eyes. Not that it's not a worthy project, I just had that little concern of dues of the other communities. And I don't know yet, are they putting the money, the also that they're going to forward to us? And then they just have to, they just have to get an additional fund until the next fiscal year, year or year. That's my other thing, because I don't, I don't know.
Could I ask where this building was built?
2005.
So it's fairly new?
It is.
Okay. And these are facade approved, they're not because there's problems, they're just?
Not, nothing structural. It is in hopes to make the, make the building look even more appealing to draw people, draw people to the business, draw people to Huxley, make it just stand out as a better-looking building all around. And the big part of that was to add that garage door for coffee time with locals.
So.
If I look at that board write, I only see two years that you have $10,000 match has been made to, in an argument to the, should we wait or should we not wait? Totally understand it because we are outside the limits of asking for it because we are currently not a community that would be able to apply. I'm curious how many would be, how many years you've made that 10. I can't, I, I'm going to start buying materials into the next month. I've kind of been waiting for this process to happen. And the way the rules read, you cannot buy any materials to improve or purchase any of the improvements until the grant is accepted. We are going to move forward with the project irregardless. We'd sure like to involve the county and involve the city of Huxley. I think it'd be great for both of them. But if that be the case, now my timeline is truncated to where I can't wait until, say, the next week. Laura and I talked about that on the phone, that could I wait until the end of the fiscal year and if nobody else applies, and then it would be applicable? We'd like to get in just as a side note.
So a couple of other things, David. First of all, the 15 and 16, if you remember, Leanne said those were competitive grant programs. So other communities may have submitted, but the board didn't allocate a whole $10,000. It picked, okay? So you need to go to 2017 to take a look. And we've done pretty close, okay? So, and on that. The other thing, Ian, that you and I talked about a little bit on the phone, is I talked about what we gave the money to Zering for this year. And of course, that was a situation where we are helping Zering do facade remodeling because they are moving their EMS, their ambulance, to a downtown building and they needed to put a garage door in because, so the ambulance could get in there. And there are actually some structural problems. And if you go and look at some of these other projects from previous years, and that carrying of Cambridge is just a typo, okay? City of Cambridge, I'm sure is what she meant. Okay. But anyway, like Collins, it was to paint several downtown Main Street buildings that were in desperate need of paint for Zering. It's remodeling of a, it's a remodeling project and part of the facade, and we're talking about bricks falling off. So when you look not only at this program with the $2,000 cap to begin with, the thought was that this would help people come in and really make a difference. I know that the language is written that way. So I just wanted to point out to you that I did explain to you where previous money is gone. And I've been thinking about it, for me anyway, how do I tell a taxpayer that I went ahead and Huxley, which is a growing community with leaps and bounds with your housing? And then I gave $4,500 to remodel what is pretty much an okay-looking building now to, for preference, where we could be six months from now and have someone who walks into Cambridge or walks into Slater and actually says, I will take a rundown building and I want to help make it a going viable concern. And that's where I am then, when you add in on that on top. I'm not open really, when it came down, comes down to it, I think, to really open the program to Huxley and to Story City at this point, other than at a end-of-the-year type of suggestion. That's what I said.
Let me add something to that. And I thank you for all your historical information on this. It's good background. I, Mr. Whitaker, you said that you had been encouraged by a previous supervisor. So, you know, I understand that, to come and say that's what this program is about. We may have different feelings about what the program is about. I tend to agree with Supervisor Olson. We're looking at small towns where, and when I've sat through the presentations, there are people that are saying, no, this building has potential, but we can't do anything without some additional monies. We're trying to get it to a point where we don't have gaping holes, gaping holes in our main streets and trying to attract businesses to them. That's the kind of situation people normally come to us with. You're coming with rather a different situation. And I also kind of feel like these earn on a lot of monies and maybe we need to reserve them for the smaller communities where they really need that jumpstart to get, you know, to get a building in shape where they can keep, continue its viability. You've got a building that has, you know, has viability right now. So I guess I'm not, I'm not particularly, I appreciate you coming and it is a good project, but I'm not particularly willing to say, yeah, I think it should be awarded out of this, out of these funds, to make an exception for that.
Yeah, you know, I don't have problems with making exceptions to programs. If it kind of meets the criteria and the need at all. Given some additional information that was provided to me, I do have some reservations. I've been going around to the small communities and visiting with their mayors and that, finding out, you know, what have they been working on, where are they at right now and what are they looking at future bodies? A number of them are already talking about other projects, whether they are ready to submit something today or it's going to be, you know, three months from now, but they are, their councils are already working on that. So I would have some reservations, particularly since there's no structural problems with the building. That's, for me, is where I have a concern at the time. I think what you're wanting to do is a great idea, but that is just my one concern that I have right at the moment, with the information that's been provided to me as of today.
It sounds like we probably are leaning in the same direction now and.
If I can make one more.
Correct me if I'm either of you, but I'm sensing at the board saying this may not be particularly at this time, an appropriate exception to be made on our program.
If I can make a comment, even if you don't approve ours, that's, thanks for hearing us out. I would have you consider looking to the future to possibly add Story City and Huxley as they are growing communities. And talking with John Holdeman at the, as the city manager, city administrator there, he says, we don't have a program that fits your size. There is no program. They just instituted a program, but you have to do for their Main Street, for the downtown buildings that are not as visible as ours, that may be in need of, or in disrepair and need to add funds. There's a brewery that just came to Huxley that they asked for a couple hundred thousand to match on that. And so the city of Huxley worked with Dustin to make a program for that. And as we talked through this, he says, boy, this doesn't fit at all because you're asking for such a small amount. With only a $4,000 ask, it just doesn't, it doesn't go there. But he thought the community involvement would be good. So before you make your decision, I leave you with two comments. And the two comments would be, Laura said them both as we started, what better way to help the community, smaller communities, and very rare a business wants to come to a small community. This is our way to help them.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for having that conversation with me before.
You bet.
And.
We'll move on then to the next agenda item, which was discussion and consideration of using Ted Garnett for mission statement facilitation.
I'm going to kick it off and then turn it over to Alyssa. Let me shut this down. Back towards the end of May of this year, I came before the board of supervisors, just to remind you of some strategies in the strategic plan that's on your wall, that we needed to be moving forward on. The development of a mission statement was one of those. And that was the specific item that I brought forward to you. And the direction of the board at that time, well, I do, the objective states under county operations, to purposely promote Story County's value and vision, use the work already completed as a starting point to develop a comprehensive mission statement for Story County. So the direction from the board at that time was that Alyssa and I would work and identify some options for the board to develop that mission statement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alyssa.
Good morning, board of supervisors. So what we did is, we did reach out, we have a consultant that we use for some of our training. We have a lot of consultants that we use for our training. He also does, you know, strategic planning, mission statement facilitation, different things like that. So we reached out and he gave us a cost and kind of a timeline and different sessions, which you would have seen. We did attach that to the agenda. And kind of what he views as an appropriate facilitation for a mission statement program here. We did take into consideration that we have used this consultant. Our department heads and elected officials and other staff have been in training. One of the key things he's done in training is talk about our vision and the core values that we have at the county and really pushes, he does a lot of training on accountability, culture, and that's what we brought him here to do for the county. So in front of you, you'll see the costs associated with this. I did look at our budget. We do have $7,500 within the board of supervisors' budget for consultant fees that have not been spoken for. And we have another 8,000 that we're using for another project. So we do have funds in the current budget to utilize for this. I don't have any other projects on the horizon for this fiscal year. Some of those are unknown as far as what we use those consultant fees for. If we have any union grievances or arbitration hearings, that's what we typically use that for. So as of right now, I don't have anything marked for that $7,500 we have budgeted.
Laura, any questions? I do, but Alyssa, you have?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So you reached out to this gentleman specifically and was there discussion about maybe getting some other quotes?
Our financial policy doesn't require that. So when we had this discussion with the board the last time, you know, they kind of directed it back to staff to see what would be a good fit. And if we need to do, go out and do a quote, we can do that. It might, you know, it will lengthen the process.
I just, this is, I've already kind of mentioned this to you, but what I'd like to bring back to the board at some point here in the future, after we've hired our new director of external operations, is a discussion about, is it time to take a look at our purchasing policy and how we do this? And given kind of some feedback we've had on some other recent RFPs or searches. Okay. So anyway, so back here, so, okay, so I understand he's very, comes very highly. So shifting gears entirely here to a different thing. It says here under the list of the duties, four hours with the planning team. Now, I know when we talked about this the first time and gave direction to staff and for you guys to go out and think about this some more, I remember it being more of an inclusive type of activity. And so in my mind, I walked away with a planning team being more of a large group from very And so in my mind, I walked away with a planning team being more of a large group from various departments, different levels. I think Supervisor Merkin had mentioned about when she'd gone through that at Department of Corrections, that's how it kind of worked. So will you elaborate on what he thinks a planning team is versus what maybe my vision of a planning team is?
Sure. The planning team is up to us. There is no set standard. When we had discussions with him, it's the county's mission statement, not an individual department. So just as thrown out there, there should be representatives from each department or office on this planning team. Now, whether the board gives that up to that department or office to determine who that is, that's up to the board. For the elected offices, I would recommend that that's how it's handled. Let the elected official determine who they want on that planning committee, understanding if there is representatives from each department and office, that is a very, very large group to do this, and it may take a little extra time. But that's what we refer to as the planning team. It's, he doesn't determine that. That's based on the board and how they determine that.
And I think it's very important that if you're going to have a mission statement, you have buy-in.
Yes.
And I, to me, that does mean more than just department heads and elected officials because I don't think, it's something that's seen as well, that's management's mission statement. It's got to be all employees' mission statement. And there's a way to do that that doesn't have to mean you have to rent a tent and have 300 people in it. You just do representatives of various, of departments and representatives of jobs, classifications, and to make sure that all, you know, it doesn't, it's not every classification in every department, but that you have all classifications represented and you have somebody from each department represented.
And there are different things to get input at a later point from all individuals.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can have an inclusive planning team without, like you said, renting a tent.
Just wanted to make sure, especially when it said four hours, I think about putting 10 people in a room together with an hour just to get everybody to start it.
With my experiences with well facilitated process, you can get a lot done in four hours.
Correct.
I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, no, I would agree. You initially think, gosh, you're going to like a couple day or a couple days, have a planning session, then it becomes more of a gas session and you have to focus on task, you have a good facilitator that will keep you focused and moving along.
And that was also into consideration with, when we reached out to him. He does get us, you know, he has proven that in training and we've seen him in other situations. And we've had him here probably two or three times over the past three or four years to do that type of training.
What is your timeline?
I'm going to, I think, I'm going to have Leanne talk about that. I think we're hoping by the end of the calendar year, but we're getting, we're getting further and further behind our initial plan, so.
Yeah, we're really from the time we go, and that would be a signed contract with the consultant, a three to six month, more like the six month timeframe, mainly because we get into the holiday season with different levels of involvement by different staff. But then we get into the budgeting at the same time and then budget work sessions. So probably having a defined mission statement sometime around March of 2020.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for bringing this proposal. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we extend the offer to PeopleStatements.com, LLC, to People Statements LLC, to facilitate and assist staff with developing a core mission statement for, as outlined in the presented memo.
I'll second that motion.
Not to exceed, I should add a dollar amount here. I'm going to say not to exceed $10,000 because that gives you an extra, it says here, an extra session if you need it.
I'll just, just remind you that 7,500 is all we have in the budget, but I would have to come back to the board and request additional funds.
Right, anyway, but I, okay.
Why don't we call in?
Want to take the 7,500?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do the 7,500. Okay.
Okay, so you decided on 7,500?
7,500. We'll keep it easy.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Higgins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you.
So you'll see an engagement letter on a consent agenda in the near future.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to department reports. Thank you both of you for your work on this. And Mike Cox, Conservation Quarterly Report. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Hi, Mike.
Good morning. I hope you all got out and enjoyed the last holiday weekend of the summer.
Absolutely. Did you?
I did.
Good.
I did. As did a lot of people in our parks, or at our parks, so. A few things that I think, that I have for updates since the last time I've been here. And most notably is the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor. Thank you all for attending our grand opening. The end of June, the 28th of June, we had approximately 400 people there. It was a tremendous event, well received by the community and the park has just been really busy ever since. And so that is, that's tremendous. We do have SciBiz Lab there at the Core Building who's conducting right now an economic impact analysis for us. They did an earlier phase of that that focused on construction, the impact of construction, and then this one is overall impact of operation at the park. So it'll be encouraging to see, interesting to see what they, what they come back with. The next and final phase for the park is the Trail Connection. As many of you know, we're working through easement acquisition. We need to get six easements in order to do that. And thus far, we've finalized two and the others are, we have tentative agreements on. Two of those are working through the ISU Foundation Legal Department as we speak, and so we'll bring them back, bring those back fairly soon. And so that corridor has just been getting all kinds of acclaim and we've been giving numerous tours out there. And so it's going quite well. Another thing that we've been working on this summer is the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail paving. You know, this is the first, these are the, this first project here is the first that we've paved anything on the trail. That trail has been, was identified for paving through our county trails plan. And so thus far, for the life of the trail, it's always been an aggregate trail or a crushed limestone trail. And we know we'd like to see it all paved. And that's, that's what our trail plan calls for. So this first phase, we broke the trail up into several segments, if you will, to pave it. The first one was from Slater to Huxley. And so we've, we've now completed the paving portion on that. Doesn't go all the way into Huxley, it goes to 535th. And at that point, it intersects 535th, which is a gravel road. And the plan is to work with Engineers Department and to resurface that or hard surface that section of that road from the trail intersection north to where it intersects the county secondary roads, Blacktop, just north of that that goes into Huxley. So that's the plan right now. While we've been working on that, we've also been looking at Phase Two, what that would be. And that will be connection, or I should say, paving of the trail from, I believe it's called Trail Ridge Park at Huxley on the east side, yes, the east side of Huxley, east of, excuse me, west of the interstate, going under the interstate to the east and then going to Cambridge. Total price tag on that is about a little over a million dollars. And we received a $200,000 grant for, from SERPTA for that. And then last week, we were noticed, we were notified that another grant request that we had put into the State Recreational Trails Program, that committee has recommended us to, for award, and we asked for 530,000 in that grant application. So that brings us, if, if we do get that award, that'll, that will essentially give us three quarters of the funding for that next phase. So we continue to work forward or to work toward getting, getting all of, or as much of the trail paving done as we can and leverage as much money as we can. Another thing we learned this, this summer is that, and I think that this will help with, with future resources for, for trail improvements and paving, is that there's a, there's been a national trail designation from coast to coast, and that's called the Great American Rail Trail. They went through a competitive process to, to look at the alignment on that trail. And we were very fortunate to be now chosen as a part of that trail. So the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail is now part of that coast to coast Great American Rail Trail. So we expect that that should open up some doors for some other resources to help us get some improvement to the Heart of Iowa. So, so that's tremendous. Speaking of trail improvements, as we speak, we have contractors working on the Prairie Rail Trail, that connection from Highway 65 into Zering. And so that will be wrapped up here in the next probably three weeks, that'll be wrapped up. So nice to finally get that one, get that one behind us. Laura, I think you've been, you've been here and know that we've been working on this for a while, trying to get that one done, so.
How many miles is that, Mike?
What's that?
How many miles is that?
That's only about a mile.
A mile?
Yeah. That section of trail, the old railroad right, and I won't get into the weeds telling you why it's taken so long or the issues that we, that we found with this project, but that section of trail is an old railroad way and was never developed. Because back at, many years ago, DOT wouldn't let us do a trail connection across the highway. And so we never developed that section of trail. And now that we, now that that has changed and we can do that trail connection across Highway 65, then it only makes sense for us to develop that trail into town. And that also coincides with the resources that we've put into the community at Dakens Lake and the ability to get folks from Dakens Lake out onto, onto that trail a little better. The Beach House at Hickory Grove is another project that's underway. And so we've got contractors out there working on that. That will be done this fall as well. Speaking of Hickory Grove, we've been working on that, as you know. I know, Laura, you've been out there a little bit this summer, but we've been working on that all summer. Progress is moving, moving ahead really well. I think that the weather has been favorable. Weather's been cooperative with, with our contractors. Right now, they're working on dredging the east basin, so that, that portion of the lake east of 680th, they're working on right now. But the dam is complete. The jetties are for the most part complete, bridge is in, island is complete. And so it's coming, it's coming along really well. Still expect that they should be, be complete this fall. Their deadline isn't until next spring, but I expect they'll be complete this fall, barring any unforeseen weather or equipment malfunctions. The contractor on that is RW Excavating, and they've got, they've got the means to put a lot of equipment and labor at that project. And so that's why it's moving really well. It's moving fast. On your consent agenda, you passed setting a public hearing date for a Dakens Lake cabin, and that will be for consideration of the specifications, plans, et cetera, and to release that project for bids. So the design has been moving along on that. And so we're hopeful for being able to wrap that project up. Water quality, a couple of things that we've been doing on there, you think you're all aware that, that we've been working with Prairie Rivers and City of Ames and other stakeholders on developing a water quality monitoring program. That's moving forward still. We worked with Prairie Rivers on a, if you will, putting a grant request into the Community Foundation for some money to support that. And they've, they're, they'll be getting that completed and they've been invited to submit a full application for that. So I expect that that will go well. I hope that they'll be successful in getting that grant and then leveraging any resources that might come from the county in the future. Hanums Mill Low Head Dam is another project we've been working on. You think you're probably all familiar with the issue with low head dams. Two primary issues, the first one, of course, being safety. At high water, they, they really create significant safety problems for any water users. And so we now are, have contracted with an engineering firm, Houston Engineering, to do some consulting for us and to identify some concepts that, for dam mitigation. You're probably aware that the City of Ames has been doing that at River Valley Dam. And with, although the weather has not cooperated with that project, they were successful in getting the funding necessary and it really became a large, heavily sought community project. So we expect that, that we'll get this portion, this design portion wrapped up here this fall, and then be able to, as a community, make some decisions about what options we want to go with in the future. So there'll be looking at options from complete removal to just perhaps a mitigation in place to make it more, more friendly for river users and also make it navigable for, for fish, for fish passage, so. So we look forward to continuing to wrap that one up. On the environmental education side or event side, boy, we had a busy summer. We had about 20 camps going on throughout the summer. We had over 200 participants, children participants in those camps. So those went really well. We're in the process of final stages now, getting ready to offer our Wild Women of the Woods. This is our seventh annual since Hickory Grove is closed, and that is where we normally have it. We're having it at McFarland Park. But I tell you what, this is one of our biggest programs. We, we hit our maximum on the program every year. And so we're, we're about 70 participants a year for this overnight, overnight experience. And so to date, doing some math on this earlier, we've probably had 500 people that have participated in that program. So it's a really successful program. All our classroom programs are now scheduled, so we've met with all the teachers in the county, all of the elementary through middle school teachers in the county, and have their schedules lined out for this coming school year. And so look forward to being able to get into all the classrooms again. As you may not know, we are in, all of our programs are in every district in the county. And so that's, that's encouraging. And we do charge a fee for that. We have a very nominal, it's been the same for many years, $1.25 per student per year is, is what the school districts or their parent teacher associations pay for the, for the programming. We have had to limit the number of programming, the amount of programs that we do over the years because there's been just so much demand and we can't keep up with all of that. So we have limited our classroom presentations and still encourage schools to do outdoor field trips and explorations. So every year, we think about, we kind of evaluate, well, should we, should, should we relook at that fee, $1.25? And so I expect that that'll be a discussion again this year, if we should. And so I expect that that'll be a discussion again this year, if we should evaluate that. We're also, I want to say, back in the 90s, we started a program called the Master Conservationist Program. It was a program that kind of delved into lots of different aspects of conservation and multi-session program and then at the end issued certificates for the participants that that made it through and as master conservationists. That program really took off and other counties started offering it. And now the well, eventually, the ISU Extension Office took that program as well and carried it statewide through their programs. It was was very successful. It kind of went through a lull and and wasn't offered for the last several years and now we're seeing that come back. And so we're partnering with Story County Extension to offer one here again this year. First session was last week and so we've got we're excited to see that program come back to life. We also coordinated a river cleanup that happened last week on this on the Skunk River. We coordinated that with the Skunk River paddlers, the City of Ames Outdoor Alliance, the Story County and others and was was a really successful event. You know, we don't have the Skunk River Navy anymore. Some of you may be familiar with the Navy, but part of the part of it's an ISU program or had been for years that that is no longer no longer happening. So we coordinated a smaller version of that ourselves and we're we're successful with getting a lot of debris and trash removed from the river with the assistance of those groups. Lastly, I will say that, speaking of Hickory Grove, we do have a behind the scenes tour that you're all are welcome to come to on the 5th. What is that, Thursday?
Thursday.
This Thursday at 6:30. So if you're interested in that, this is a tour that we're offering to our partners' program members. And if you're interested in attending that, then that would be wonderful. So you'll meet at 6:30 on the 5th at the Hickory Grove Maintenance Shop. So you'll be able to get behind the scenes tour on the renovation project. Any questions?
What you been doing this summer, Mike?
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like much. You got a lot going on, a whole lot going on.
Well, we're we feel fortunate to be able to get a lot done.
I'll let Lisa go first.
I don't have any questions. I think we've got quite a bit going on. I am interested in the tour.
Oh, very good, very good.
For this, so I appreciate you giving us a heads up or reminder.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
You got questions?
You go ahead.
Ms. Shear?
Yes.
Okay. So Sybiz Lab, first of all. All right. So you and I had talked about that earlier and, you know, but I wasn't aware that they still were working on it. I thought they were all done. So when do you expect them to be done where we can see a report?
I think this semester, they'll get wrapped up this semester. So, you know, the I expect this fall, late late fall.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay. So next, you talked about the trail for the ISU, the next one for Tedesco Learning. All right. And I just want to make sure for the public, I think I've got it straight in my head, but what we're working on for the trail that you're looking at that will extend over to R 38.
Correct.
That we've already gone ahead and funded, if you will, through the last of our pulling money from the wind farms. In the paper about a week and a half ago, there was an interview with Rick Sanders, who is now the president of the ISU Research Park. He talked about more trails in the research park and I'd just like us to make it very clear that those are not trails that the we would be involved in, correct?
I'm not aware of of the his reference to trails. Any of the trails that have been in our plan are either already constructed or or are this next trail, which is the connector over to R 38, as you mentioned.
How we're paying for it, et cetera. So there's no future planning there.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay. Then the question about, let's go back to Hickory Grove here and excited about that. But where are we as far as the sanitary sewer situation? Have we finalized? Are we going to see something coming here soon about the about using the septic?
Good question, and I probably should have mentioned that here. Margaret's been helping with kind of review of some options on on what we do there. Her last, I guess, information that she got last from from septic engineer, if you will, not sure the official title, but someone that she's using as a consultant, is is that the Advantix system that we were contemplating and a COCO COCO system, treatment system that that she was looking into. That person advised that he didn't think either of those were feasible options for us.
Really? Okay.
She is going back to dig into that in more depth and so that's why there's not a lot that I can offer as far as an update in that right now. If it if it does turn out that those are that those are not feasible solutions for us, if there's no way around the issues maybe that that are addressed with through that, then we would either be looking at a onsite lagoon or, again, a connection to another provider in the neighborhood, i.e. Colo, or some other established wastewater treatment If we go with a onsite lagoon, which was what we have not wanted to do for many reasons, one of which is we have to have, one of which is the cost, the capital cost of it, which is over a million dollars. And secondly is then the maintenance requirements. And so we something and thirdly is we'd like to get the wastewater treatment out of that watershed. And so those are the reasons that really we've been remiss in wanting to move forward with an onsite lagoon. So that that book is being written as far as being able to get some information so that we can then make the best decisions necessary.
Okay.
We just don't, I wish I could tell you more, but we don't have it yet.
So I think we need to speed this up a little bit. It's been several months since you, Jim Pease, and I went to the Colo City Council meeting that night. And a quick recap of that meeting was Colo expects us to kick in a percentage of what their costs could be. So minimum, we were thinking we're getting $200,000 and then what it would cost us to hook up. They have been analyzing where there's some water leaks are in their sewer system because they're not even sure they have capacity and if they would have to build a capacity. So this has been, this has been a while in the discussions and so when did we go?
Oh.
March or it was cold. I remember you guys had to help me not slide into my car.
Right.
So we now are looking at hopefully having Hickory Grove reopen in the spring of 2020. So we're sitting here now in September. We need to kind of know what's going on here or we need to go back to Colo and find out if they did get their survey done over the summertime.
Well, another issue and I think a big issue with the city was that they and they did speak as a as a council in this regard at that meeting and that that is that they want a bike trail connected as well. And so, you know, that that's just not feasible for us right now. And so that's a that's a that's a hard one to get around.
In fact, we had told them, I believe, we've gone back and told them no. I mean, basically, I was surprised when I talked to somebody from Colo about a week ago who's who said, boy, I sure hope you guys are going to hook up. Like we walked out of that council meeting saying no, and then we had a discussion at the board table about it.
Yeah.
So is the Advantix system definitely out?
No, I'm not going to say that yet, no.
Okay, so that's the first thing.
We're still gathering information.
So that's the first thing. And do you have any idea when we'll know whether that's off the table?
You know, I meant to get back with Margaret last week to see if she's got any follow up yet and and I haven't. So I'm not sure. But we'll be we'll be having that discussion soon and trying to move forward. I also want to know, though, you bring up a very good point, Loris, about, you know, the aid is taking so long and then what do we do when it opens? When the park does, of course, the campground has been open this summer. We are utilizing the current wastewater treatment system at the park. We are utilizing that. We can continue to utilize that. However, we also know that we have to be transitioning to a new system. But we but completion of the renovation is not predicated upon or opening the rest of the park is not predicated on a a new septic treatment system.
Okay, thanks. So a few months ago, and I want to say this is about three months ago at the beginning of the summer, I had mentioned to you and Supervisor Merkin that I had been up in McCall'sburg and the discussion had shifted to scheduling, hopefully in September, a meeting about the future of trail trails in the northern part of the county since. And have you, the two of you been able to work that out, figure out when you might be able to do that and invite like people from Story City, Roland, Zering to that meeting?
Did somebody go up to us at a council meeting in McCall'sburg, didn't you?
That is not what we were talking about.
Yeah.
No, but I'm asking.
So so two issues, two things. One is a coordination meeting and we haven't got that scheduled yet. We intend to have that this fall. And the the communities have been notified of that. But we just haven't put a date on the calendar yet. As far as the trail improvements in McCall'sburg, we really encouraged them to apply for for a REAP grant for doing some trail improvements. And as we started going through that process of kind of developing a scope for that for that trail improvement project, I think we realized that the city isn't quite ready for it and that there needs to be some more public vetting out there and some kind of some public discussion about what that trail improvement might be. But we were reticent to move forward on that without that more thorough vetting of the of the project. We'd been there and discussed the project at the city council on three occasions, at least two occasions. And city council was was favorable. They reached out to someone in the community to help them with writing a grant and that person had quite a bit of historical knowledge and and brought out some questions that then the city was was not, the city and and us was not favorable in movement forward at that time with a grant request until those answers to those questions got resolved. So.
So with the grant, but did they get the gravel up there on the trail? Did they get that gravel or spread that you were going to send up in the prairie seed?
We haven't yet. That 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 became available in the FY '20 budget and we haven't done that yet, no. We want to have, we we I held off on that intentionally to use that as potential grant match if they would get the the REAP grant. Since that didn't happen, then we can go back and have that discussion about, let's either, let's just either get that done or look at what gets used in a potential potential grant ask in the future as match.
Okay. Okay, thanks. That takes care of my list. Thanks.
Okay. I was earlier went to Hickory Grove Park about a month or two ago, so I'm looking forward to Thursday night.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
Seeing the progress there.
Luke Philmeyer, park ranger there, is going to lead the tour. And I tell you what, he has just done such a great job out there with managing this project, working with the state and the contractor, and no one knows that project better than him. And so you you all will appreciate spending some time with him.
I was surprised how many people were camping there, even with the lake truly drawn down.
Right.
And it was a dusty, really a dusty mess to walk around there, so.
Right.
But people were there and enjoying it, so.
Right.
They'll look forward to having.
Testament to how much people like that park.
Yep, they do.
So, Mike, do you have a written report?
Yes, I will give that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I actually see that Chris gets it because it's more important, the public sees it?
Okay, thanks.
Upcoming agenda, there are no other reports, so we'll go down to upcoming agenda items. Is there anything anyone needs to suggest, wants to suggest for upcoming agendas?
I would just pass up the CIR call and send agenda.
Okay.
I think I've mentioned everything that's coming next week or the next couple of weeks there.
Okay. Next is public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment at this time? Seeing nobody moved to microphone, I'll close public forum number two and ask if anybody wants to report on liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and have any other announcements.
There's one that I have, this again, going back to CIR, is the dissolution from the 2008 agreement, Hamilton County, therefore did pass resolution that they will assume CIR themselves. It'll be a process and they're just waiting for all the other counties to submit their notice for six to eight for dissolution.
Okay, great. Thank you. I attended the webinar for the Iowa Workforce Development slash Workforce Initiative and Opportunity Act. And that two-hour webinar, I think the key things that came out of it were that the entire state has to redo its regions. The state had 15 regions, it's down to six. That may have been discussed at the board table before, but it turns out the region the reason is, is that the regions were directly funding the projects themselves and the regions actually have to create a board to fund these projects. And so plus, there were too many of these regions. So I will be attending training on the 18th and the 20th to learn more about how this will actually impact us, how we form from business leaders. And 51% of the board that will be handing out the money must be made up of non-elected officials, if you will. So I will have more information after I attend these in in in-person training sessions. But something that kicked in my mind on the webinar was while we are receiving some money from the state to pay for staff, it was emphasized two or three different times that, of course, the regions will want to make sure that they are adequately staffed and so that they may be wanting to put resources in. That's how it was put to me. I'll come back to you, but we may be adding something to my list of, guess what, maybe coming up. Okay? So so that's the key there on that. Tomorrow, I will be in Waukegan in the afternoon. Herta, as a part of its saving and redesign, is going to have a listening session in Wauke Key. There's one a couple of days after that, then in Newton, but I can't attend the one in Newton. But this will be very key also to the reduction in expenses about where we're listening, we're going out and listening to actually and then a part of what Herta got was a grant from the DOT to figure out how to be able to schedule more efficiently and redesign. So we are really going down deep there to figure out how we can continue to provide the best services and make sure that the revenue is appropriate. Okay.
Okay.
Okay? I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay. Tomorrow night, I'm, I'm attending ISU Extension in Hour-Riches Farm Dinner. That stands for Food and Agriculture in a Relationship That Matters. I have no idea really what it's going to be, except, uh, it's an opportunity to have a meal with farmers and talk about farm-related, agriculture-related issues. I'm very interested in hearing about water quality and soil health issues, so that's why I'm attending. Uh, Thursday morning, we have a Storycom Board of Directors meeting, and then Thursday night, I'm going to be out of Hickory Grove Park, seeing how things are looking there. Uh, Friday, uh, we have, and Monday, we have interviews and, um, public presentations already, right, for our Director of External Operations and County Services position. So, we are moving forward there, and we are looking forward to that, that process being completed and having a new staff person to help Alyssa and take over some of the workload that she assumed when Deb left us. So, have a good partnership there again. And then, we'll be back here next Tuesday with more information. So, is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Sounds good.
I'll say it.
Okay. Evans?
Aye.
Wilson, aye. Merkin, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.